One nation under God, we have this for the liberty and justice for all.
I short can.
Thank you.
Aldag.
Here.
Hubbard.
Here.
Popoff. Schloss.
Here.
Summer Pharaoh.
Here.
Tell.
Yeah.
Keo.
Here.
And Noel Olivia.
Will we approve the city council meetings in March ten twenty twenty five?
Meeting by summer Pharaoh?
Also, yep.
Second by Slade. Joe, anything to add?
No sir.
Ben? Nope. The members of council, the comments on the minutes. Seeing none, please call the vote.
Tell.
Yeah.
Popoff.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Schloss.
Yes.
Aldag.
Yes.
Summer Pharaoh.
Yes.
Keo.
Yes. Minutes approved, thank you. We have no prearranged participations or down to non-arranged participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak this evening under non-arrange? Anyone online that would like to speak other than arrange? Keep in mind, we have one more time with the agenda. We will move on to item. Do we have any declaration of conflicts of interest where they come to issue there? On item G, do we have agenda?
I move to approve the agenda with two changes. One is the consent agenda item two should be here on River Methodist Church. Instead of Dexter United Methodist Church. And then adding the consent agenda item that was in our supplement. Consideration of proposal from Aqua Aerobic Systems for an amount not to exceed nine thousand six. Nine thousand six hundred fifty dollars.
Okay, can we just do that? We'll do that as new business and that's okay? Is that a consent or did you want us to consent?
We can, we can do it as either.
I'm gonna ask about any of those.
Alright, that means we make it. Ten three.
Sure.
That's okay. Second. Thank you for making the motion, seconded by Summer Pharaoh. Any discussion on the agenda? Please call a vote to approve the agenda.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Schloss.
Yes.
Tell.
Yeah.
Summer Pharaoh.
Yes.
Aldag.
Yes.
Popoff.
Yes.
Keo.
Yes. Agenda is approved, thank you. We have no public hearings on page two of the agenda at seven oh three. There's one communication in the back.
Yes, the. Sorry, I'm trying to pull up the, for the meeting minutes for. The here on River Water should council, the next meeting is not until April seventeenth.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question.
Joe.
We no longer have a rep for Western Washington Area Value Express?
Uh, we do, it's Jenna.
Okay, alright, so we'll update the meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Question, any other comments on the meeting list for the calendar? Okay, we'll move into our first report. In our public services superintendent, Tim, welcome.
Is everybody nice?
Very good.
You have two reports running.
Um, I, it was just something I noticed, so I wanted to bring it up. I was turning right in front of bushes onto Ryan Drive. There's a huge pothole right there, right, sort of in the right hand turn lane there, so. Okay, right, thank you. Sounds good, thank you.
Just for telling the questions about public services before, I don't think so. Maybe next time, no. Never know, there was an extended report, it took the whole briefcase.
Well, we, we expect double the questions next time.
So now.
Um, I just wanna thank you and your team for the two items that you took care of in Wellington. Or Dexter Crossing and Wellington Drive first was all our trees that needed trimming. And also the no parking sign in the beginning of Wellington off of Carrington, thank you.
Yeah. On your sewer report, it says you clean the Alpine sanitary and remove rocks in that near Jeffords?
Yeah, so there was. And it was there, it has to go back, it brought some rocks back. And so we had to go in the house, call it, actually forty to jump in the morning, went down to pick the rocks and then. There was the, where you guys have the line before, well, there was a section about that far and it's.
Have you? Have you, are you gonna run a camera through it to see where the rocks or do you know where?
Basically, we're at, we're gonna have to do some work or we have.
So when you ran that, is that what the bakery's on? Did you find a bunch of grease in there?
No.
Really?
No.
Okay, thank you. Working.
Tim, how much rain did we get from the? And water in the new basin?
In the context.
And how full of the basin? I'm glad we have that.
I am, yes, a hundred percent. It works out really well, especially if you're operating.
Maintenance too.
Yeah, yeah, dude, guys, for sure.
I mean, like the filters, I mean, it's the filters, I mean, you just put it to the E Q place and you're not out of compliance. And he wasn't out of compliance with the filter, that's awesome.
I just curious, I haven't seen the report all that often, so. Any other questions for Tim?
Not a question. Tell Courtney, I'm not surprised she jumped in a hole and did random things.
Doesn't seem to surprise me.
I mean, that's what I was gonna say, like, just tell her to keep on being herself. Yep, well, I'll see her next parade in the back of the dump truck.
Okay, any further questions for Tim? Floor still yours, we got updates, sorry.
Yeah, bits, well, we did for fuel tank, re-replaced in the generator, the building. And it was actually. Well, our Oscar large and we started, I thought they did the highest and they weren't very well, so it was nice. Um, we did finish up here on our Dexter Crossings for term of tree trimming, so it's first full year they really did that. And they did really well, so I think we're gonna keep going with that and we're looking at now replace this one. So, and Scott started.
Yeah. Yeah, we used to do that when I first started working for the D V W, you know.
Yeah, the form's still there.
Right, but it's, we had to get away from it because there wasn't enough people, you know, as the demand of the city got larger. But that's, that's really nice, that's cool.
No, it's six people.
And where do we get our concrete from?
Don't.
Don't know.
It's, it's weird, because this is the first community I never had a cement license in the city, so it's like organs. It's just different for me, I'm used to speaking, oh, hey, I need two years, five years time to get there. And now it's like I gotta call ahead of time, schedule it.
All good. Okay, thank you for your team's good work. Next up is our community development manager. Michelle, how are you?
I'm fine, welcome to this evening.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay.
That, is that better? Alright, before I go into some updates, do you have any questions for me?
Is that a hand job?
Uh, there was something that turned a little loose, go ahead.
Okay, so on the meetings, a number seven, the city of San Antonio, that's actually April sixteenth. Uh, I am meeting tomorrow with Eagle on the thirty forty five Broad Street as part of the D D A's. Investigation of what mitigation can it do and what programs does Eagle have to help us do that? Excuse me. That's the only update I really have right now. I will point out that the D D A open house is April ninth, it's a Wednesday, it'll be at the library, six to eight o'clock. Please, if you've got time, stop by. To hear what people have to say, I think we've covered the stations for information and to gather input quite well. Everything from a D D A one oh one, which is kind of education, so that people understand what the D D A is, where do they get their funding? An overview of the planning process for their strategic plan and development plans, obviously data collection, mobility parking. The downtown opportunities map that D D A has prioritized. And then this is where we get the real meat and potatoes feedback, will be on the redevelopment opportunities. Um, there'll be key questions asked. Along each of the corridors, things like, what are you most proud of now overall in Dexter? And then on these three specific corridors, and then. You're sitting now on Main Street, having a burger and a beer, if you wanted a water, whatever you're doing, walking on the path. And you look out and you see the city. What do you see in twenty years in the downtown? What do you see in the Baker Forest Grand Neighborhood? What do you envision for the Baker Road corridor? And then what do you envision for the Dexter and Arbor corridor? That feedback falls in line with the same. Process we used when the D D A created their, their whole strategic plan in two thousand six. It generated a lot of really good input. If it isn't broke, don't fix it, so we're doing the same thing, we're using that same format to get people's input. So that we can move forward on the D D A, and it would, the object is for it to also be completed by the end of this fiscal year. That's everything I've got.
Questions from Michelle? Think we have ones, go ahead.
Eagle is the only organization we can talk to when it comes to determining that grants.
I wouldn't say it's the only, but it's the first one to go to. Although I'm not as familiar with E P A grants, they have grants as well, usually those are for. Much more involved sites, if you can imagine. But Eagle does have a very good grant and loan program. It's, usually it's a million dollar grant. The loan program, I think, goes up to ten million, which obviously you won't need to go that far. But if, if we're able to secure. You know, a million dollars on a grant to mitigate some things to make that site. Easier or less challenging for developer. The D D A wants to investigate that, so Heather Smith from Eagle will be out tomorrow. We'll meet out at thirty forty five Broad and I'll get the details on that and I'll be bringing that back to the D D A and then obviously to city councils. Thank you.
Mr. Tell.
Where are we on the grand view acceptance of their public improvements?
That's probably not coming through until June, July, they're waiting until the spring in order to do some of the punch list items they have. Chris from O H M and Tim have gone over everything, they have a very complete punch list. Which is, which I have here at the city, but also we provided to the applicant or to the developer. So that he's aware and we'll check things off as, as he says that they're done, we'll go from there.
So did I ask Jenna to give us a brief update on the D V A meeting that happened recently?
Sure, we can, I have one other thing to add with grand view, it's something that Tim and I will be bringing back to you in June and July. This past week, last week, if I'm not mistaken, another one of the curb boxes were. Two of them, sorry, were damaged just as part of that ongoing construction. They will, Mr. Brower, will have to put up a two-year maintenance and guarantee bond for the infrastructure. But that doesn't cover if things are damaged because of his construction. That's where a performance guarantee would cover that type of, of incident. And so at this particular point. We haven't indicated to Mr. Brower that, yeah, we're going to require it, but it may be something if this, because this isn't the only time that. Construction is damaged, infrastructure, obviously, when you take it over, that isn't some, you don't want to have those costs incurred. Unnecessary costs.
Yeah, so this is on part of the property that hasn't been built out yet.
All of the infrastructure, underground infrastructure, sidewalks, et cetera, with the exception of the pedestrian pathway.
Right.
Is in construct, is in finely constructed areas.
No buildings on.
No, all the buildings, so let me step back, you can envision, phase one and phase two are everything. To the southeast of that entrance coming in off in Grand Street.
Okay.
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 Phase three are the three buildings that would face that pedestrian easement.
Okay.
Two of those buildings have been constructed. All of the buildings in phase one and two have been constructed with the exception of. The building that would be to the southeast of that driveway.
That's my question, we have, part of this is for stuff that hasn't been finished yet, other than the utilities. And the path hasn't been done.
And the path hasn't, Mr. Brower has committed. He will be up through, he's done two buildings now. So the only one that won't be, that the concrete won't be finished, is the one in front of that last building. Um, that fronts onto Grand Street. Excuse me, he has said that he would do wood chip path.
Would you that? So I guess. We've done this before, we've accepted when the project's not completely done, correct?
This is, no, to the best of my knowledge, no, we haven't. This one was done based on the way that the P U D agreement was written, that's something Mr. Brower wanted to be able to. To have the ability for the city to take on. Um, he could have actually asked for it earlier, he didn't, he did it till now, that's great. From city perspective. But that is different from what we've done previous.
Okay, so. The path isn't done either, and he wants to put wood chips down.
Until.
Obviously, we gotta do a full inspection, right? I mean, if all of.
With C I and some of the work that they did in there.
Okay.
And we had shut main down. Uh, four years ago, to come in and shut it down, because they were working a curb box, they were hooking up. And they didn't want to touch it because they were really to fall off. So, yeah, last week, they called me and one of the curb boxes, they couldn't get on, so they asked us to come and try to get on, we couldn't get on, so that's. And I was literally not even five hours later, he said, well, I need the one on the other side done too.
Okay.
And I told him, so all he's got to do is, and it's gonna get to greater.
But we, but we have sewer main that hasn't been used and it won't be used until they get these building.
Fortunately, yeah.
Okay, we got storm water that hasn't been used since they put all that in, I mean, how do we know that all of that's?
The storm water hasn't been used because it's third.
That's true.
It's not, where the, that side has.
Well, you brought up a great point, I mean, if something gets damaged during the process of the construction, how are we gonna handle that?
If we don't take a performance guarantee. It's ours.
And then also, what, what's holding up the path?
We, Mr. Brower, and Sean will be able to fill in any gaps. Mr. Brower has preferred not to put the path in because there was ongoing construction and he didn't want to have to go in and repair something.
Well, I think we can have the same concern on all utilities too.
And the boardwalk.
But, but the, the other, I mean, the other thing that we have. The other thing that we have is you're not gonna grant. Final approval of any building until he has sidewalk and the. You're not gonna allow him to. Hook up water, if the water meter, the water shut off boxes bent or. I mean, there's all sorts of opportunity to. Say it's not right before he wants to put people in the building, I mean, long before that. The, I mean, the la, the last thing. He, he's only, he's only not, he only, he's only not for. The sidewalk on Grand because he hasn't built out the two buildings in front of Grant, right, it's just like. I, I guess from my experience. That, that part would be done when those buildings are done. I guess from my experience in dealing with that situation, it would be easier when I was still being the superintendent to have monies there and not have to go back and. I think conversation, this is just what's gonna happen and we're gonna, and we're gonna fix it. Yeah. I, that's what. But I mean, in theory, we could require another two-year performance bond on the sidewalk that he puts in later.
Right, it's not a question of, of that.
He's asking for underground utilities to be accepted and all of them are in. Right, and they've been in for a while. Right, that, that, that's his point, that they're being used.
And that's what Tim pointed is, is part of that infrastructure that we'd be accepting are things that they. That continue to get broken during construction, so that's all.
If they had to, they gotta shut off, that goes with irrigation, that's how to be dug up three times. And I keep telling it's out, I'll explain to them every single time because it's a two-inch pipe, so when you put a rod on there. Put a key on there, you can back. Told them again last time they did it, I'm hoping it's good, so we're gonna turn back on here like spring, so I have a promise.
If we bill them for that courtesy?
No, because there's, we do have all that place stuff and turn on the water. So, believe me, he's gonna have to bill them when he, he called Master Dr. and committed another. I guarantee that.
Yeah, don't care about Master, you have to care about me.
There's just, we do it for other places.
Right.
I mean, we have, you know, this couple, probably about five or six in town, well, we'll do with bitter places, Westridge. The, uh, country market place that's called Oxford, but all those places like that. We'll turn it on, and I'm also like Reese, we're the top one, so.
And then also, we've got a lot more experience turning them on and off, and that seems to work in our favor.
That's what I mean.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, I don't have any other updates.
Okay, thanks for being here tonight.
I, I, I think there's a question for Jenna about.
More than really questions, give us a brief overview of what happened.
Sure thing, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
And so the C B A, um, it was, the case was seven zero zero one Dexter and Arbor. Uh, which is going to be, one of the tenants will be just play Dexter. Um, family fun area. Um, their request was for variance for a building, a building sign. Um, the zoning ordinance requires it to be, uh, one square foot for every linear foot. Um, so up to forty-two square feet, they were requesting a building sign for a hundred and forty-eight and a half square feet. Um, and for it to be located on the parapath, the triangular, uh, parapath above their, their storefrontage. Um, the C B A, after a public hearing and, and discussion. Um, they voted three to one, uh, to deny the, the variance.
Joe. Did you get very much public input?
We received two letters that were, or emails that were opposed to it. Um, and two emails that were, were supportive of them.
Now, the ones in support were merchants in that subdivision, the ones against were residents of Dexter Crossing. In addition to, uh, somebody came in, she lived on Forshee Lane, just outside of town there.
No, on social media, I can't remember if it was Nextdoor, Facebook, there was a long discussion when this first came up initiated by. Some of the people that had gotten some of the notices and stuff. And, you know, there was at least a dozen people. Well, and that's what, that's what surprises me, you know, it, the. The discussion that went on and stuff, and I, and I said on there, you know, you got the notice, send them, tell them, send it in. That, you know, that's what they're looking for, they're looking for your input, your feedback, it just, it blows my mind that, you know. That many people can take the time to post on Facebook or Nextdoor, but they can't type the same doggone thing in an email and send it off, but neither here nor there. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay, we have a written sheriff report in the packet. Does anybody have any comments or questions on the sheriff report?
They all still swooping around there. Sergeants becoming captains and.
Yeah.
Lieutenant's retiring and.
Yeah, so, um, I'll, I have to ask Sergeant Hogan to come to one of our meetings so he can make introductions.
Joe.
Um, the third item that's listed on there for February twenty eighth, where it says. Deputies were contacted by Dexter City employees reference an ordinance violation on Park Ridge for illegally directed light. So. I don't know, I assume that that came from our office?
Uh, so, um, we had a ordinance complaint, um, that, that came from a resident. Uh, regarding their neighbor. Um, so we, we conducted inspection, um, the sheriff, uh, the, the resident also contacted the sheriff. Um, independent of us, but then, uh, ourselves and the sheriff got in touch, um, to, to coordinate and, and discuss. Um, and, uh, that, that is, that, that has been scheduled for a court date, or there was a court date scheduled. It went to the wrong court, so now it's being rescheduled for the correct court. And, uh, basically a resident, uh, attached a very bright light to the side of their home, uh, pointed at another resident's home. And, um. We're working through the process.
Got it, okay, I, I just wondered when illegally or directed light was, so I didn't know if they put up their own street light or something or what, so.
Uh, not, not quite a street light, but maybe it's bright.
Yeah, I understand, okay, thank you.
Other questions on the sheriff report? Okay, we're down to city manager of work.
Sure, so, um, uh, I'll start off with an introduction for our new recording secretary, Elena.
Hello.
Um, if you hear Josh whispering, um, they're training this evening, um, and.
Loud ass whispering. My, my humble opinion, my opinion.
Try to keep, try to keep it clean for the kids.
I mean, ju, 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 just learned to whistle, so hopefully we'll, we'll train them how to, how to, how to whisper here too.
Relax.
Being around here, buddy.
Thanks for helping us.
Well, friendly.
Uh, an offer was accepted for, uh, the finance director slash treasurer position, uh, for Chris Ackerman.
Congrats.
Will we meet him?
Uh, so he is on vacation this week, but, uh, hi, his, his planned start date is April second. So I would expect to see him at the first meeting in April.
Can you shoot me a? What do you call it, past work history?
Resume?
Yeah, is that what that is? One of them there things. It's just thirty years, you know.
Yeah.
Let's see.
Yeah, I mean, um, uh, he spent thirty years with, uh, Ward Church.
What's that?
Uh, it's a church in Northville. Um, primarily in, uh, finance and, uh, administration.
What about all those MERS stuff we gotta deal with, is it gonna be, all that, or is it all just?
So, so, um, uh, accounting for churches is nonprofit accounting.
Correct.
Uh, which is fund accounting.
Right.
Uh, which is very similar to municipal accounting. Um, so, you know, the, the, the MERS stuff, um, you know, the, the nuances of how we budget. Um, the intricacies of, of our B S N A system, um, I, I, I think we're in our, our confident that, um, he'll be able to pick those up. Very quickly.
I'll watch.
I, I appreciate that, right?
Oh, yeah, always consider it. Serves my purpose. Um, one more.
Great that you found some, yeah, please.
I probably goes to you too, Johnny, uh, sheriff police. I probably goes to you too, Johnny, uh, Sheriff Police Services meeting, is that tomorrow?
Um, yeah, so, 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 uh, we have a, uh, we were asked to participate in a meeting, um, with the new sheriff. Um, and, 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 and her new team.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it sounds like they wanna talk about, um. The, their, their budget, um, and, uh. Probably introduce us to the new team and, and those sorts of things.
When is our current budget with the sheriff at next year?
Uh, yeah, I, I think it ends, uh, December thirty first, twenty twenty-six.
Okay. Almost time to start looking at that again, quite like looking for the county to lead the way, I don't know if they're gonna do it like. Sheriff Clayton did, or PSU thing, or.
Yeah, so, so u- usually we receive a proposal the year before it expires, so we'll see it sometime, probably early next year. Um, with, uh, the last couple of times, it's been a four or five year extension. And the last one was, uh, twenty twenty-two with a four year extension.
Three or four?
Yeah. Twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, so a, 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 a five year extension, um, starting in twenty twenty-two. Oh, and I, I would expect to see something similar now, what the percentages are gonna be, I, I couldn't tell you.
You know, with the current, concerns of the current public safety.
Mm-hmm.
Blending in with this, you know, that jackpot ends up being thirty percent, forty percent of our general fund, I don't know.
Yeah, for, for, for sheriff, it's. Fifteen to twenty. I wanna say fif- fifteen to twenty, cause between, uh, police and fire, it's almost fifty, between forty and fifty percent.
Well, it's up there.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, I, I'm not planning on going to talk to that.
Um, so then, uh, the, really the only other thing is I sent out an email with a poll, uh, to help select a date for, uh, city manager review. Um, I, I haven't checked that, uh, yet today, um, I checked it end of last week and it looked like, um. Most of the days were open for the, for the couple that had, had responded, so.
I'm sorry, one more. On the thirty-first is with the county commissioners, it's regarding how much money we're going to be available to us. Or how much we need to dedicate to them.
So, that. Uh, a few months ago, we received a, uh, memorandum of understanding in the mail. That was based on a resolution that was passed by the county board of commissioners. Um, and essentially, we were asked to sign the MOU, um, based on. The county commissioner's resolution and what the county administration had prepared. Um, I personally have a few hangups with the way the MOU was prepared. And so, that, that deals with the millage dollars that we receive, um, from the county roads millage. Um.
Yeah, we, we probably get too much, you know. Give some of that.
We're getting exactly what we voted on.
Yeah, so, um, uh, um. The, the, the county, uh, based on the way it was written, the, the county seems like they're looking at it as a grant, rather than. Us being entitled to the dollars from, from the millage. And that's just a conversation that we're gonna have to work through with county administration and, and the commissioners. Um, our, our, our commissioner, uh, Jason Machieski, um, has been invited to that meeting as well, so.
Kind of interesting grant, huh?
I, I think that's the way that they are looking at it, even though I, I don't believe that that is the correct way to look at it.
Was it, is that even legal? Under the state?
I'm, I'm hoping that we don't have to, have to go over that, yeah.
Interesting move.
Yes, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions for Justin?
The, 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 the only other question that, that I have is, um, so, you know, I, I have in here, um, the city manager review date question. Um, typically, we also do hold a budget work session in April. Um, do we also wanna do that on a, on a Wednesday?
I also wanna jam them all in here.
Okay. So I'll, 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 I'll treat the, the, the doodle poll or the, yeah, the doodle poll as both, um, city manager review date and. Um, potential budget work session date.
I can do the last three days. Okay, not the night.
Okay.
Unless the tour of Mill Creek Park takes me past. I don't know, we've added a lot of trail, I plan to walk.
Yeah, it's all over.
The ninth is the DDA thing, which I'd like to go to.
That'd be great if you can.
Yeah, so just throwing that out there as a. The thought, yeah.
Uh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Have we gotten any bids back for the road program, roads program?
Uh, we, we, our roads bid did close, uh, last year, for, for last year's program, twenty twenty-four. We received one bid from Cadillac, uh, I'm happy to say this year we received eight bids. Um, and a number of them came in very, very good. Um, uh, Marcus is working on, on leveling the bids, make sure that everybody bid apples to apples and checking everybody's math. Um, but I, I think we're estimating around a million dollars in, in construction costs. And the low bid came in about seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Where's the high, one point five?
Uh, I think it was, I think it was like nine fifty some.
Everything's coming under bid.
Hmm?
They all came in under bid?
They, 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 they all, well, they all came in under engineer's estimate. Or, or, or at least what was in our, our, in our T A M P, in our, in our roads plan.
Projection.
So.
All right, it's amazing, we can't get one, one year, and then next year, we got like a line.
And, and, um, O H M said that, that, that's something that they're running into on a lot of project, on a lot of bids this year. Um, they're apparently contractors are hun- hungry this year.
Joe, I apologize, was that for the road bids?
That's for the road bed.
So. Being that the bids came back slightly under, um. I, I did go through, uh, Sharon Farms and looked at the roads. They're incredibly bad, they are just horrendous shape, um. And I thought, like, ten, twelve-ish years ago, when we went through and did that first round. Road repairs, and we did a lot of them in that neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
And I could have swore we did some of them that look as bad as they do, which is not very long for the life. Uh, so, my question is, do we have an inventory of cores for here on farms?
Yes.
And.
But, but the, 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 this year's project is, uh, predominantly Dexter Crossing.
So what I'm saying is, I mean, to dovetail into that the bids came like less than we had, we. What I'm asking is to ask O H M, do we want or need to do any cores in here on farms? Because we may need to figure out if we need to do something more than just milling over like. Cause another ten years, we don't have, wanna have to do.
Yeah, so, so I, I, I believe we have cores in, in here on farms, and, and here on farms is, uh, is a. Not. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak out of turn, I, I, I don't know, I give a year, but it's either. Twenty-seven or twenty-eight, we're, we're back in here on farms.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Well, I know we have roads, you're not here in front, I'm, I'm planning, yeah, yeah.
And, 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 and I, I, I think the, the ones that we're going in to do are, are deep melon, melon over.
Yeah, I, we had a discussion, I don't remember if it was during the workshop, Marcus was here, and I was questioning. The balance between doing a hundred cores. So you know what's going on compared to, I, I believe it's always been that the fixes can be the most expensive, right, Joe? I mean, if you go in and you're gonna do a milling over lane and you just find a mess and you didn't plan on paying for. The undersurface.
Oh, yeah.
It, it can get expensive.
Sure.
So we did have that discussion, and he said he was gonna, you know, when we got to here on front, he was gonna look at different areas and maybe, you know, pop some cores in there. Just to see, because I know in some spots, we, we were missing asphalt, there wasn't even the proper amount of asphalt, so. Like you said, Joe, we need to know that, if we do, and you know what I mean, going into.
Well, and. It's one thing if you say, okay, we got courts, right, and you go down the street, so you have to took one here, they took one here, they took one here. Now, at this point, you can see where the road is failing. You know, you can see where, you know, there's more cracks sealed than their ass, is that. And I mean, it may be that, maybe it was, you know, thirty feet beyond that, and we just didn't do a core in that section, and. We need to know if we need to do a bigger repair to get down and repair the base versus just doing. Uh, it's just a suggestion that, especially if we have some of the funds left over, that we didn't expect to anticipate to expend. We could maybe get a little bit smarter, go more with how spending, you know, and it may cost us more in the future, so look, expect it, or like Dan said. There might be areas that we need to tear up and do a deeper repair on before they go through and do a milling over.
Yep. Do, and maybe you already covered this last council meeting or one before, but do we know when they're gonna be doing Alpine Street Water Main? Uh, gave you a. What's that? Okay.
Always a week. In April, like a week from now?
Right.
I, 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 I think it was, I think last time we, we heard it was, it was mid-April, I think they were targeting like a, a, April fourteenth or fifteenth.
Yeah, I don't know, we changed dates a couple times. I know it's coming yet, cause it's, yeah, cause two weeks ago, it was gonna be four weeks, I guess, so that's my.
So, so are we gonna have to shut a section of main down?
Not Main Street, no.
Two, they're, they're, they're gonna plan to put a place, when they do it all, it's gonna be a direct craft and where it's gonna go. Alpine Street's gonna be shut down for a lot of week while they do, you know, take care of everything, start to get rid of all the old and stuff like this. Then they're gonna try to get it up to one lane, and as we did before, when coming from Russia. They wanna stay, ever May, is it planned to be done?
Yeah, they, they, they were, they're, they're planning to be done, um, uh, a week or two before the end of May.
So, are we gonna be able to isolate the pub and all that to come from Central Street, so we don't have them out of water?
Yeah, yeah, with that, the only place that's gonna affect is the brunch and, um. Uh, the little knick-knack shop that was there, lady, and citizens and something.
So they've already been notified?
Yeah, we notified them, we notified the library, we had to call. And you figured all the days you're gonna take, the wages and stuff like that, so.
Thank you, thanks, Joe.
Yeah, and, and, and I'm, I'm still waiting on, like, their final dates to, to be able to, to put it out in an email update.
Well, any other questions for Justin? Okay, I'll move down to my report. I, uh, included a photo from, uh. This is my, my favorite viewing point, um, which is up by the farmer's market. And, uh, I wanted to just ask Justin or Tim, are, are you and your team. Um, part of the inspection of the storm and the utilities that are going in? Sorry, are you guys, are you guys satisfied or happy with how the utilities are going in on that site? On the back, the backside of the fire station?
Yeah, yeah.
The storm and all that?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yes, we, I would prefer the water to go a little different, but it didn't jive with the way the pounds, and I'd rather see it bring, bring the name, but unfortunately, that's, it didn't go back.
Okay.
So, oh yeah, everything else.
Just interesting, I mean, there, there's a significant retaining wall that's been constructed over the last week. All on the back, it looks really, really good, and the, the layering of the soil, and it's exciting to see it come up. After watching that hole be there for the winter period, you know?
Yep.
Doesn't seem that long ago that while we're swinging a sledgehammer on the inside of the whole station, thirty feet higher. I'm not sure what happened to that block, but it's, it's still missing?
Yeah, it's still missing in the Irish Hills.
Anyway, it's quite, quite impressive, I would forget what was in the bid, seven thousand cubic yards of soil or sand or whatever?
It's, it's a lot.
Well, now, now you see where it's all going.
That's what we're looking for, that's so much more air square footage, it's two.
Anyway, very cool, um. I didn't include it in my report, but I will for the next one, uh, Michelle has that, that tour of, of Mill Creek Park. Uh, with the city of Celine. Um. I had talked to their mayor, uh, Brian Morrow, um, a couple of different times over the last few years about. Our process and our park, and I'm glad to hear that they're coming to visit, do we know how many people are coming for that? Okay, so now. Okay.
When is that? Date, do you know the date?
April sixteenth.
Oh, okay.
I was just gonna say, if, if they're bringing a lot of people, maybe we wanna ask for some other volunteers to attend with us, just so we can. Instead of being one on seven and one on, you know, that type of thing, change the ratio a little bit, but we could play that by years if it gets closer. Thanks for setting that up. Happy spring, everyone. It's finally here. May not feel like it, but happy spring, right?
Um, I know you met with Matt from, uh, um.
Road Commission?
Road Commission, yeah, this, I know you guys talked, and, uh, has there been any? Further discussion on our. Participation requirements?
I have not talked to him since the last time I talked to him. Um, I was excited to hear that the bids for our road stuff came in last, because I actually think that means that we have a little extra money we should spend. In cooperation with the road commission and get those things done.
Yeah, I only talked to him for a minute in a. With that Dexter Forum or so.
Yeah, there, there, there seems to be a little bit of, um. I don't know, not finger pointing, that's wrong, but. Justin has, I've asked Justin to try and pin down what it is we need to do at each intersection, what, what the deficiencies are, that they're noting that don't meet the.
Right.
The standard that we're now trying to apply. And. I think he's having a little harder time getting those definitive answers than we'd both like, um, so I may, I may call Matt and find out.
Yeah, but I hate paying for stuff I don't know.
Well, if I'm calling, you're not paying anything, right, uh, but, uh. I think O H M knows how to do this, I mean, they're very competent, and they're doing the rest of the projects as road commission.
Yeah.
So I think we just need to figure that out, so we can understand what our cost actually.
I didn't say like, they only needed to redo three out of four.
But, but they're, 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 they're gonna, they're gonna be putting, giving us a set of what they call. Grade inspection plans, which is approximately a ninety percent set, or eighty percent set, depending on how big you wanna be. Um. And Tim will get a chance to look at those, and Justin and our team, there's gonna be a meeting, I, I think the G I is scheduled for sometime in, in April or early May, is that right?
I, I, I haven't heard a date, I, he, 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 he did say April, but.
Okay.
When do they plan to start? Is that next year?
Yeah, it would be, it would be a spring twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, I'm assuming it goes in with the roundabout and all that.
Yeah.
Coming up mainstream Alpine Connection.
That, that, that program gets bid through what's called an M dot letting schedule, through the state of Michigan because of the funding.
Yeah.
And they are required to have a meeting with all the constituents. For example, in April or May, so that when they let it in November or December, there's a whole schedule that they'll have to follow, depending on the date. So eventually, we'll know more here, but, um, I don't know, I don't, I don't know, I think more since the last meeting, right? Okay, are there any council member reports? Seeing none, we're down to the consent agenda on the bottom of page two, top of page three. Is there someone that would like to move the consent agenda for us?
Hey, move, we approved the three consideration items on the consent agenda. One, bills and payroll on the amount of one million eight hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty-one cents. Two, road closure requests from Huron River Methodist Church for a central street. For Easter story event on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, and three road closure requests from Ann Arbor Track Club for Dexter Ann Arbor. For Dexter Ann Arbor Run on June first, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, ah, motion by Was, or a second?
My second.
Second by Dan. Thank you both.
S- 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 sorry, did, did, do we get, oh, uh, the, the other one's gonna go under.
If you could please call the roll, or the vote to approve the consent agenda?
Summer Pharaoh?
Yes.
Tell?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Alday?
Yes.
Popoff?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you, we have no unfinished business under item L. So we'll move into the first of three new business items. And one is consideration of a resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-fives to twenty thirty capital improvements, I am. Would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make it.
Move second, move by Tell, second by Joe, thank you. A discussion?
Here on Farm spoke up, though, but we've, that's always been.
Jenna, anything to add? Jenna, anything to add? How do you like our process?
It was fun.
Wow.
We haven't heard that from you before.
The actual. Putting that document together is there, so I hear it happening to the gentleman.
Good answer. Is there anything we need to know? Other than what's covered in the several hundred pages?
Again, it's the, I think, when you mentioned approval of it. Um, they went through their process. Um, as I mentioned in the memo, they just added one item, um, the Huron Farms Connector Study. The C I P has seventy-five capital projects. Um, the total expenditure is about, let's say about thirty-three million. And then the total capital cost for the first year, uh, is about sixteen million. Um, the majority, the, the, the. Um, in or spent, I should say, in C I P is. Uh, the eleven million for the public safety facilities, uh, which is scheduled for this first fiscal year. Um, and as you saw in my, in my memo, we have a change table. Um, just expressing which projects are new, which are removed. Um, and which were just new.
Jenna, I I think the most important column on here is the priority ranking one. And I wholeheartedly concur with the ones that the planning commission gave the number ones to. I thought they did a good job, the downtown capital maintenance. Playground equipment at Mill Creek Park. The Dexter Chelsea Road Connector. Downtown restrooms, got a one. Anyway, I thought they, thought they did well with it. There was one other one, research location, new water well, that's the one I was trying to remember. I I like, I like that not everything's a one, not everything can be a one. But I think they hit the nail on the head with. Those anyway, from my perspective. Doesn't mean we can't do a two or three if the opportunity comes up. Joe?
On there, you mentioned the greatest expenditure in the fiscal year twenty-five, thirty C I P is that. Uh, eleven million dollars for the public safety facilities. So does that mean? All other things held constant, we can expect next year's C I P is gonna be at twenty-two million dollars-ish? Okay. So I can, I can say with confidence, we cleared off a third of the C I Ps.
Un- 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 unless you add another eleven million dollar project.
Joey just did eighty percent of our roads and now we're gonna do clear into the capital improvement. There's not gonna be much to do in twenty twenty-six. Love it. Okay, does anybody have any questions about anything?
I have a question about the first street park, just out of curiosity, um, what's the? I know the park actually, been there once.
Okay.
Um, horseshoe. So that's great game, I hear. We're requesting to build a parking lot in addition to a storage facility. Parking lot to park. With cars. Cause I, I'm here to see people go to the park. It's a beautiful spot, but it is far from. Um, frequent visitors, just kind of curious, um.
Yeah, so so I think um, I think there there's, there are still discussions to be had about that park. The the ringers just recently removed a good chunk of their, their um. Horseshoe pit. And so I I think the the question is naturally gonna come up with, you know, what do we want to do there next? There have been discussions about, you know, is there potential to acquire the property at the front of of Edison? Uh, or at the intersection of of Edison and Second? Um, is there potential to maybe land swap with D T E to push D T back closer to the railroad tracks and pull the park up closer? Um, I think those are all.
It's kind of an awkward spot, cause I mean, D T E looks like a pretty substantial piece of uh infrastructure that that one there.
It 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 certainly is. Um, it 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 is one of, it's. One of the area's most significant substation, so. But I I I think, I think that 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 is a discussion item, um, and uh. We we know that like in the next two years. There are other priorities between the Trail Connector and Mill Creek Park Playground. So whether it's something that we want to try and tackle sooner rather than later, um. The Parks Commission's gonna be working on their um master plan. Um, which, now that you, now that you sit on on parks, um, you'll be, you'll be an active participant in that. Um, and uh, it'll be interesting to see what comes out of, out of that process.
And we just had the second. The discussion about Second Street. Read, I mean, it could be that it gets redeveloped as part of whatever ends up coming out of that study as well.
Just earmarking points for until. There's so many other things need to be determined prior to. Really this project, having a. Enough foundation to kind of even be included.
Yeah.
Um, Jenna, on the, on the Huron Farms connect the study. Which I don't object to necessarily doing, um. There's a word that's been used in the description of the update that I'd like to just ask about. It says project added per planning commission direction. Direction is a funny word to me. Could that be recommendation? Since we're, we're the ones that actually approve it? Otherwise, very well done.
Joe?
One other question on the, on the item added for the study. It um referenced a grant, um.
Yeah, some some kind of planning assistance?
Yeah, some kind of planning system program grant. Is that like a apply for it, you get it type of a thing? Or is that like there's a limited amount of dollars and we don't know if we're gonna get it?
Um, people do, you know. Though we are pretty confident that.
Okay.
Well, of course, again, if it's not somehow, we'll start something another.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Paolo was supposed to pick it up on Thursday when he was there.
Those those asking money on the left, the those here for me on the right.
It's not ambassador, but the general, uh, constable general, um, Canada. Tries to uh remind us that uh, we're still friends, right? Because we just put in six point four billion dollars to the bridge, bridge project, right? But we're still gonna do trade, right? It was an interesting conference, that's for sure.
Yeah, thanks for going. I appreciate that you, we have, have you going. Okay, we have a motion uh and the resolution which is on page, make sure we're referencing. Thank you, sixty-seven and sixty-eight. Any further questions? Justin, please call the vote to approve the capital building plans.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Summer Pharaoh?
Yes.
Tell?
Yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Popoff?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Michelle and Jenna, for all your good work. Uh, new business item M two, consideration of the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six temporary sculpture display. Someone like to make a motion? I would like to take it item by item.
If you want.
No, just just kidding.
Sure, I'm gonna ask.
Just kidding. Move by Tell.
I don't know that much about art.
Second by Aldag. Any questions or discussion? I have one question. Justin, I didn't have time to look this up. Do you have any idea, did did we budget to purchase art this year?
Uh, we, we did not specifically budget to purchase art.
Do we have, can't remember, do we have a fund set up for, to purchase art?
We do. And I wanna say it's.
Growing.
It's gr- it's, it's growing, yeah. Yeah, I wanna say it's around fifty.
That's what I thought, that was sizable. Is there any piece? I just, you know, as we get into the new temporary, it means the old temporary go away. My question is, is there any piece? That we've noticed that we have? That we might like to have a little longer?
I can always ask A C H at their upcoming meeting, um, if any really strike out the, you know, to anybody. I think over the last few years, I I think people have enjoyed the art we've had. If there's anything that the committee has, you know, I think it's, I don't have to talk to the vote. To, at least over the last couple of years, I don't think there's anything that people have been like, whoa, we, we must have this. Uh, one of the ideas I did kick around for a future that we can always do in R P, if we want, if there is something specific that we really were looking for. For a specific sculpture for in front of law, on hand, you could, um, but at least I haven't gotten the feeling. But I can always ask for, if it's the most recent.
I like the one in front of three bird person.
Like the peacock?
Yeah, I I think that's very cool. I don't know if that's the permanent spot, but I like it. It's prominent, I see it all the time. Anyway, I'm just curious. Thought I'd bring it up.
And and Joshua, you haven't gotten any other feedback, email, call? From, for, for folks saying how much they love a particular piece?
Well, that's one.
Add to that.
Two. Right, I think it's pretty cool.
Two and a half.
Two and a half. I mean, we, 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 we bring them in, we enjoy them, um. But every now and then, that's what we're saving for and I don't know that that one, I didn't look at the price tag on that one, I have no idea, but. That would be my suggestion, if there was a, a suggestion to go that way.
A significant placement like that to go, or would you like?
I would defer to the committee um for, for permanent placement of it. But but I, we, I mean, we, we have, we have miles of pathway. Okay, that that art could be placed along, not just. You know, it doesn't have to be just in front of three bird or that could be the next, you know, well, obviously there's a spot assigned, forget which one of the. Things, but. Anyway, just a thought. Oh, good idea. All right, please call the vote to approve the temporary sculpture display.
Uh, Schlaf?
Yes.
Summer Pharaoh?
Yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Papa?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Tell?
Yeah.
Kio?
Yes, please thank the A C H committee for their work on that. Hope they do a good job every year. New business item M three was what was added from the supplement. It is related to the uh filter media. And the replacement.
Move you through the. Purchase of the filter.
Before, we'll, we'll have the.
Whatever it says on the paper.
Yeah, very good. Ninety-six, uh.
Ninety-six fifty.
Fifty, thank you. Second by Dan, thank you.
So, get a phone call, about six bucks yesterday, you know, we were frustrated about six years, um, all of them inside it. And uh, no thing to think of right now, I mean, that was sure, it's. They shared one through there, which inside of the rose, you know, metal and stuff, so. We're not sure until we get into it, but part of what we're asking for, and the next was, was the next fiscal year was for filters. Because their self last around, their life span, I should say, about six to eight years, we're there. Um, we've been doing a lot of chemical, trying to keep going for the last six months. So when this one went down, unfortunately, it was the worst set of filters that we had. Um, that was in, that we had a foot in, in like lead, the ones that we're using. So what we wanted to do was, um, get some money for some D F Ps that we wanted to next year's budget. And then go ahead and proceed and go forward with buying these filters, that way maybe we can replace. And a longer, so now these ones get dirty, we can replace them, try to figure out what really fixes up.
Would you mind uh for the next packet, taking a picture of the hole and taking a picture of what those look like so that we can have a visual of that?
Yeah, the holes. I'll get somebody else to get down there. It's like literally under.
Oh, it's on the bottom?
Oh, and I mean, when I worked, I was thinking, okay. We have a light down, I'm looking, I'm trying to find it, they actually got a reflection out, so.
If there's a picture to take, I just.
Um, this is something more we have to have done. You know, this is part of that. Oh, really, they did, we did that about six years ago, so. But uh, we're gonna probably unlikely, I went, I came back today. Will eventually monitor, then I came back in and I wanted to see how they, they did, they did a fantastic job. And they pulled all of them off and uh, but the mechanism that if they, if filters sit on its own place. So more likely, we're gonna have to get that removed and then go down and fix it. So when I talked to Blair from, or Cory from B, and um, it, it, it's, it's dual, so.
And the importance of the tertiary filters, is this what helps us beat our phosphorus? Limits that we're.
Till twenty forty-eight?
Yeah, so are we gonna be able to do an inspection of the, the rest of the unit? Make sure that.
Yes, planning, what I would like to do is edit the man, it's, 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 uh. Yesterday was, once we get that out, I wanna make sure that that whole bottom needs to be coated or whatever. That needs to be done, this, we just need to make sure we get this, I mean. I didn't think in actual period of time, very, you know, you know, corrodes. And we've done, you know, we've done a lot of things for like the last year, have put on some. It's called F R P, that obviously we proved, and the atmosphere in the room is totally different than what it was now. It's, it's very, we used to walk in there and it was, first you'd be hearing, because it's like a waterfall, but uh, now you can actually sit down and talk to somebody next year. Um, and just the atmosphere of when you go in there, it doesn't smell like iron or anything, so.
Very good. Thanks for bringing that in front of us. Right?
Was this item on the C I P?
No.
What's nine point oh five on our C O? Is it the casing or?
It does say filter media replacement.
Well, that would be my next question, if it's gonna be in C I P, we're gonna have to redo the next one anyway, right?
Yeah, so the plan is, is, yes.
So get it in line while we can.
Didn't you say that you're gonna take money from next year to do the?
So, no, so next year, yeah, and uh, yeah, those.
We're, 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 we're gonna flip flop uh this, this with uh the Westridge V F Ds.
Right, that's what I mean, so there was a plan.
Yeah.
Not the hole.
No, no.
But yeah, yeah, but I, I mean, you know, we're only, we're only. Three months away from a new, a new fiscal year, so.
I'm worried about that, I'm worried about it going down and that's not being prepared.
Yeah.
Obviously they were.
So this is, this filter media, this is for uh water, water filtration plant, so.
Oh, a different name?
Yeah, so the filter plant, water filtration plant has three filters. And you've had two, uh, media get replaced for the last about six, seven years, and this, you know, this is gonna be the last. So, but I'm kind of holding off. Until uh, I, I gotta figure out this one, number two, so. We're, we're, we're working.
So this one is for the wastewater.
Yes, that's the wastewater. Believe you when they call me, it's a person that moved in my mind, was filtered over the night, like, you need to turn it off. So, well, that worked, yeah, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Justin, please call the vote to approve, with motion by Summer Pharaoh, second by Dan.
Aldag?
Yes.
Papa?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Summer Pharaoh?
Yes.
Tell?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, we're down to our second uh non-arranged participation spot on the agenda. Anyone wants to say anything on a non-arranged? Anyone online wanna say anything on a non-arranged? Seeing none, we'll move to council comments. Pablo, would you like to go first?
No comments.
Okay, wow?
Please do not put this in the minutes, but Tim, I really thought you said there was a ferret running around in the wastewater treatment plant that blew a hole in the filter.
Fair. I think that should absolutely go in.
Yeah, it was an iron ferret.
It was like, whoa, when, when did we get a ferret? Can I, can I hang out with it?
Well done, Mr. Tal.
Oh, I can't have that.
Yeah. Smart man, Dan? I do. Um, when we're having the park, I know everybody. When we're doing the park discussion and with First Street Park, it really doesn't get used a lot, and I'm sure this is gonna be a bad idea, but. Has anybody ever thought about putting city gardens down there? At First Street Park? And then I don't know how much property we got left at the city garden. So that would be a lot more.
So, so, so for, for First, First Street Park used to be DPW storage, didn't it?
Yep.
We'd probably have to do a soil evaluation if we wanted to do that.
Well, they never had barns or anything, no. There was never any structures or any. That I know of in forty years. There's no buildings or we didn't park anything there by anyone. I don't know.
There's a ton of deer down there.
Yeah, the, the, where the community garden is, is actually D T E property, we don't, yeah, I didn't know where it all was, or. Yeah, all that, all the rest of it. That plus the wooded area to the west. Give that to them and we'll take that. Right, it up. Anyway, thank you.
Yeah, um, I just wanna share that a couple of weeks ago, um, I had a meeting with Lieutenant Hunt, um, just a. No agenda, informal meeting, and, um, just discuss, um. His, his term in, in the office and as he is looking towards retirement and, um, what are some of the things he's seeing and such, so, um. If anybody has questions for me or wanna discuss that further, please let me know.
Thank you. Joe?
Uh, I have no comments, thank you.
Okay, does anyone have any additional items to add to the, uh, the parking lot known as the proposed agenda items? So now.
Considering, uh, purchasing a permanent art.
Consideration of purchasing a visual, okay. Joe?
Um, can we remove the third item on there? And then, uh, with the respect to the, uh, Dexter debate team and, um. I would like to get that city manager spending authorization. At least onto the schedule that we have for the upcoming, maybe April twenty eighth, cause it looks like.
They debate about taking off the, uh. Debate team?
I think it was already requested once.
All right, we will remove it. Take it off. Okay. I will seek a motion for adjournment at eight thirteen.
Move adjourn.
Move by Joe?
My second.
Second by everybody, all in favor?
Right.
All opposed? Have a good fifth Monday.
Yeah, the fifth Monday.
Somehow we managed to get through without staff scheduling something.